Good evening. I'm going to call this meeting Committee of the Whole to order at 6:00 PM here in Council Chambers. Don't believe we have any remote electronic attendance needs. You'll note the Mayor's Board appointments to our newly established Public Art Commission. It's our resident of Moline and a person with an art background that is associated with one of our downtown businesses. And I have a proclamation, so I'm going to come down there. Do you want to join me from the Hispanic paper? So, the proclamation is the Quad Cities, whereas the Quad Cities Hispanic Chamber of Commerce strives to support, promote, and enhance the growth and success of local businesses, and to leverage the assets, contributions, and unique Hispanic cultural identity to generate new business, and whereas the diverse Hispanic community has continued to build viable partnerships within the Quad Cities to build relationships with Hispanic entrepreneurs who are willing to take a chance, just as has been a part of the rich history of the United States. And whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, the City of Moline recognizes contributions made by and the importance of the presence of Hispanic and Latino Americans to the United States, and whereas the City of Moline does recognize, honor, and thank those who courageously went from Hispanic immigrant to defender of this great country, and to those who were killed, missing in action, prisoners of war, and emotionally, mentally, or physically scarred, and those who were able to return home safely. And whereas today, 62.1 million people in America are of Hispanic or Latino origin, and we celebrate Hispanic culture in the City of Moline. Now therefore, I, Sangeetha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2021 through October 15th, 2021, as Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you so much. Okay, next on the agenda are presentations from our Neighborhood Partnerships Committee's Neighbor of the Month Award. One winner is not in attendance today, and that's Von Sunquist for our Resident, Correct? Residential Property Neighbor of the Month, so we'll make sure they get that. But we do have our representative from our Commercial Property Neighbor of the Month, Jerry's Market. Congratulations.
There you go. Like photobomb them all. Yeah. Big ones like the Queen.
Carol Barnes, who I believe is online.
She is online, yes.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. At our last meeting on August 31st, the Council requested that we come back with two additional scenarios for issuing pension obligation bonds to fund the city's unfunded pension liability at 85% and 90%. And, I'm going to try to share my screen here. And on the chart in front of you, can everyone see the chart?
Yes.
We have added two additional lines, and I'll bring your attention to number four and number five. It's kind of small, a little slices, because there's not a lot of variance. But number four is the 85% bonding level, and it would save the city just shy of $80 million and approximately $2.5 million to $7.7 million annually out to 2040. And the second scenario is the number five, it's the bright yellow in the middle, and that is the 90% funded level, and it would save the city about $83.7 million total, and annually about $2.6 to $8.1 million annually out to 2040. So with all these various scenarios, between the 50% at $46.6 million up to 100%, $93.1 million, that kind of shows you the broad range of what the potential savings could And next in your packets, I'm going to page down here, Anthony updated these scenarios, and he has the detail behind the financial analysis to show how all those savings were projected. And those calculations begin on page 15, and we're not going to go through it in detail. It's just if the Council has any additional questions, I know Anthony would be happy to answer those. So these are the calculations at 90%, and then 85% is below. Does the Council have any questions on these scenarios?
Anyone at the moment? I don't see any. Carol?
And in addition to that, a question was asked last week from Council, is if we would have any flexibility in funding 100% of our normal annual cost, should a future crisis or a pandemic occur? And we reached out to our actuaries, Lotterbach and Aiman, and I'm going to let Anthony address their response.
Sure. Thanks, Carol, and good evening, everybody. The response from Lotterbach, I don't think it was unsurprising, but the, I think it boils down to the normal cost should be thought of as an operating expense. And realistically, while they didn't give us a legal analysis, they said you realistically shouldn't assume that you could do anything but fund 100% of that normal cost, given it is an operating expense.
Okay.
Are there any other concerns or questions regarding the normal cost?
Okay, I don't see any.
What direction would the Council like to go, Mayor?
Okay, yes, that's a good point. Is there any further direction you would like, Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Carol and Anthony. This was great information, and I know I had sent in some questions, and thank you for getting us back on that normal cost analysis. What I'd like to do, based on this information, is that direct staff to come back with the necessary information for us to do an 85% I guess, what would it be?
Bonding?
Funding through that bonding. I think that, we'll make that motion, and then I'll explain if there's a second.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Moyer. Yes.
So, the reason I think 85% is the sweet spot or the right place to go. I mean, obviously, as the chart says, at 100%, all things being equal, if we hit 7% on everything, we save the most amount of money. But historically, even over the last 10 years that they had provided us, we've actually been above that 7%. We're at like 8.5% or something like that. Also, if I was a betting man, at some point, the state is probably going to either reduce from 90% down to 85% or 80% to, or extend the period of time. And so what that will do is, both with us maybe making a little bit more on it, and that possibility of it being stretched, that will then give us some flexibility on some of the repayment or the additional payments that will be in this. Because we'll have our principal and interest, we'll have our normal cost, and by not funding it at 100%, we'll also have our makeup amount. Well, if they reduce the amount down to 65, and we're already at 65, we'll have no extra makeup. Or if we gain more than 7%, and we start to creep up and we get to that 90% area, we won't have any of that makeup. And so I think that that gives us some extra flexibility down the road on what we have to fund into this thing and still meet the state statute.
Okay. Mr. Timian, and then Mr. Williams.
Just, is this 85% by 2036 or 2040? I can't recall.
2040.
Yeah, so right now, the state requirement is that we're supposed to get to 90% by 2040. We would be doing 85% today by taking out this law. And so we'd still have to be trying to catch up to get to that 90% by 2040, but if the state changes the requirement to only be 85% by 2040, then we've already made it, and we wouldn't have to spend that little extra makeup, which is about a million extra dollars a year. So I'm hoping, with fingers crossed, that that'll give us some flexibility down the road.
Mr. Williams?
I like that idea too, because the Downstate Article III and Article IV pensions, the police and fire pensions, for the last eight, 10 years, the whole idea was once the state was able to get a hold of those funds and bring them into the state, that they were then going to extend when they had to be, you know, take that 2040 and extend it out with the rubber band, and then also lower the threshold to make it easier for everybody to meet that, so that they, you know. So that was, there was a strategy all along. It's not a secret or news to anybody. So I like the idea of not trying to fully fund it all the way up, just kind of hedge our bets, because we'll probably be there anyhow, and even quicker if we overachieve at that 7%.
And the other reason for that, oh, sorry.
Mr. Went, let's hear from someone else, and then we'll come back. Mr. Walden?
What is staff's recommendation or thoughts on this, between Carol or you, Bob? Do you think this is a good move, or does it make you nervous with this much debt? Or what are you guys thinking from staff?
I guess my perspective on it, again, Carol can chime in as well, is that I don't see, there's always a risk anytime you issue debt. I mean, the only real risk is, as Alderman Went pointed out, is that interest rate. Until now, we've done very, very well, you know? And at the 85% level, which he's recommending, it's kind of, it's kind of a, it's a sweet spot, as he described it. I think that is a sweet spot. 100 would be ridiculous. Anything less than 85 would be foolish. I don't know, though, and I somehow recall hearing that if we go into this and we make this decision, that we are saddled with it. We can't really change it. And if the state makes changes, that we may not be able to take advantage of the thresholds if they change those thresholds, you know? And somebody online can correct me on that, if I heard that right two weeks ago.
Yeah, I could jump in.
Thank you, Anthony.
The answer is, it's almost yes and no. So if you were to fund up to 85%, and the state did make those changes, that remaining 15% that you left outstanding, you'd obviously be able to take advantage of the changes the state, to the state mandated funding levels based on that 15%. But the 85% would be locked in because we've sold the bonds, so that bond payment would be locked in. However, the bonds would be callable after a period of about eight to 10 years, so, you know, depending on when we set the call provision. So it wouldn't be locked up for the life of the loan. At some point, we'd be able to refinance the bonds, and if at that time, the Council decided to stretch out the payment to coincide with the current, you know, the then-current amortization schedule, you could do that. I would say the risk to that is, we don't know where rates would be at the time of the call provision, but you do have that option. What you don't have the option to do is to change the amortization schedule of the bonds immediately if the state were to change its funding requirements.
Okay.
Thank you.
Given that, I feel comfortable with the 85%. The normal cost, I agree with Lotterbach and Aiman, 100%. That has always been the issue. That's what's driven the problem from the get-go, is underfunding the normal cost, and it must be treated as an operating expense annually, just the same way they do it with IMRF. That's exactly the way to look at it. That's normal cost, and that is a fully funded program here in Illinois.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Went?
And along those lines, I agree with that, and one of the comments was, even if, so if we did it at 100%, and then we beat the 7% rate that we had set for it, we could be fully funded and then still also have to do our normal cost, as the thing is. So we could wind up in a situation where we're perpetually overfunding this thing, and we don't want to get in that situation. So by being at 85, that gives us flexibility both up and down, and so that's why I'll be supportive of that.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
So, and I'm on board. I like the percentage we're at. That's all good. My only question is, is there an opportunity, or should we take an opportunity to consult with our own pension boards at all? I mean, I realize they don't meet until November again, so wait until that timeframe is not feasible. I don't know if that's appropriate to confer with them, or how that would need to work.
I would answer your question from my perspective. I did have the chance to reach out to our Police Pension Board Chair, and we both felt we needed to learn more at that point. So I think at this point, now that things have been shared from our staff, it's good to reach back out. So I think to be efficient, probably Bob and I can coordinate reaching out to those boards to get their opinion, because that is polite and helpful, I think, in the long run, you know, even as you make a final decision.
Yeah, I would concur with the mayor.
Okay.
And I don't think we should be waiting until November. I think we have to reach out.
We can do concurrent.
And if they need to meet, then I think they need to call a special meeting to discuss. But I mean, I think it's a fairly straightforward piece, but they'll have a stronger piece of, you know, that's their pension, they're looking at their, they're looking at it from a different perspective.
And there's a lot of, a lot up in the air for them, simply because of the consolidation at the state level, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for Anthony. Anthony, can you go back over the timeline from inception to completion for the issuance of these bonds?
Yeah, absolutely. So if, you know, if we get the nod essentially to start moving today, we would be likely back in, I would say, early November with a parameters ordinance for the city to adopt with a sale late November, closing December would be the earliest scenario. Now, obviously, we're, you know, this is a lot of bonds, and we're getting towards the end of the year, so we certainly don't want to push it into a market that isn't ready for it. So those things will come into play, and we're going to watch that. But if we just started going today, that's the anticipated timing. Obviously, post this meeting, I'll share a timetable with the group, so we can kind of all take a look and comment on it.
And this would, of course, be a competitive sale?
You know, we've typically done negotiated sales, most recently with the city. The city's currently rated A1, and historically has used Robert Barrett as underwriter. Now, I would say that the rating level with the city would generally be conducive to a negotiated sale in this case, and also the size and purpose of the financing. I've done, you know, I've done a few pension obligation bonds. They're taxable bonds. It's certainly not a small amount of bonds to be issued, and, you know, given all of those factors, that would be conducive to hiring an underwriter and having them market this through a negotiated process.
Thank you for that answer.
You're welcome.
Okay. So then, can you repeat your motion, Mr. Went?
Motion to issue at 85% is...
To direct staff to bring that back at 85%. Okay. And we're still doing that? Yes, we can still check in with staff while we do.
There's time. Nothing I want them to wait till November. He's still coming.
Call a special meeting.
All right, so, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, do we have public comment tonight?
Yes.
Okay, sir, could you come to the podium?
Yes, I'm Scott Metz. I live at 2375 19th Street. Miss Mayor, I appreciate your diligence in trying to get back to me. Last week, I was informed by a survey crew out in front of my yard that the City of Moline would be putting in a sidewalk. That's the survey crew telling me. I haven't caught the wind of anybody else verifying that, but it seems to be like they're telling the truth. I live on the frontage of 74, going eastbound the church, big church right at the on-ramp. I'm the first house past, just past Glenwood Drive. I'm concerned, I have a piece of property like this that gives me 340 feet of frontage on 19th Street, and I'm wondering, with disability, who's going to clean the sidewalk in the wintertime? State trucks won't even, won't even give you consideration to turn the plow the other way and throw it toward the interstate. All those streets and driveways up and down 19th, all that snow off the street piled in, I got a nurse that lives with me, and she's been on call at different times in her career, and I know there's plenty of nurses and doctors, and they're locking us in. That sidewalk's going to be virtually inoperable with those plow trucks tossing all kinds of snow in over the top. I can tell you that I know that we're supposed to maintain that. Last few years, the city's been having a hard time maintaining streets and alleys, and if you can't get that done, then I can't expect that you'd expect any resident to get that done on the sidewalk either. Seems like for 70 years since that house has been sitting there, didn't need a sidewalk. I'm kind of curious as to why it's going in now. And I understand that nobody's going to respond to me today, but I just want you to know how I feel. Miss Mayor, thank you again.
You're welcome.
City Council, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for sharing that information.
Name and address.
Yes, I do have his name.
He signed in.
He signed in, so we'll...
Okay.
Thank you so much. All right.
Very concerned.
All right. So we move to questions on the agenda. Are there any from the council? Okay, hearing none, we move to agenda items. Griffin's Floor Crafters Agreement for Moline Police Department Flooring Replacement.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the city staff went out through fleet and facilities and did an RFP for the carpet replacement at the police department, and the proposal in front of you is to replace the carpeting on the first floor for a cost of $91,080. This includes removing the fitness room and the weight room, and then some costs associated with having a subcontractor to relocate furniture, which you can imagine is a big part of the cost. It's very labor-intensive. And we received one bid. We reached out to many, but this is a local vendor, Griffin's Floor Crafters, Inc., from Moline, and we're recommending approval.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, Mr. Walden?
Bob, is there a warranty on the carpet? The previous carpet obviously didn't last as long as we had hoped. Is there a better warranty going in on this one, or is there a warranty at all for it?
That's a question I'll have to ask Sarah. I don't have that right here.
Is it going to affect my vote?
I would assume that there would be a limited warranty.
I don't know a warranty, Alderman, but I know that they are changing it to the squares, the individual square. For your place, routes.
We'll ask Sarah to speak online if she's available.
Yeah, I didn't know she was online. That's one of the problems.
Hi there. Yes, there is going to be a warranty on there. I'll have to double-check whether it is a 10 or 20-year, but it's going to be a commercial grade, and as the chief said, it's going to be carpet squares, so as those sections of the carpet are, you know, they begin to wear down from heavy foot traffic, we'll be able to replace just those sections that have worn down, as opposed to having to pull up the entire section of carpet in a hallway or a room.
Okay. Mr. Moyer, are you out of hand?
Yes, thank you. I was just curious, what amount was, but I know it was budgeted for 2021. It just doesn't say here what the amount budgeted was, and I was curious.
It was somewhere around $55,000. I apologize, I don't have my budget book in front of me. When we received the bid, roughly half of the cost is for moving the furniture, so our bid was right on par with the carpet, or excuse me, our budget estimate was right on par with the carpeting, but we did not anticipate the extremely high cost of moving the furniture, which is a big part of it.
Any other questions? Mr. Went?
So is the remainder going to, is there some that has not been spent this year out of that line item, or are we going to have to take it out of the reserves?
Everything is going to be covered by facilities. I spoke with Carol Barnes after we received the budget figures, so that I could get back with her, and I let her know that it was definitely more than what we had anticipated, and she assured me that I would be able to cover that out of our facilities accounting without negatively impacting anything else.
Okay. Anything else? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes. Number two, a contract with Langman Construction, Inc., for project number 1365, 2021 asphalt maintenance for the amount of $298,850.
Just so you're aware of it, the funds for this particular project are the funds that were originally earmarked for the parking lot maintenance, which, as you know, we are not doing this year. So that money is being redirected, and the low bidder, in this case, Langman Construction, Inc., for $298,850. It'd be our recommendation to award this additional parking lot and surface roads maintenance to them.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Walden. Any discussion? Mr. Walden?
Bob or Joe, if Joe's online, do we have enough time, enough bandwidth in the construction season to get this done yet? I know we've carried over quite a few projects already. Is there enough time to get this done?
That was the question that I raised. I was told, yes, we would have time, because I wanted to know when the asphalt plants, actually, the batch plants close around here.
It's usually Thanksgiving, right?
Joe, are you online?
Yes.
Can you confirm that?
It's usually November.
Yeah.
Can you hear us?
Joe? Mr. Kuhlambach?
Hello, Joe.
He's not muted?
He's not.
Well, if he comes...
Yeah, it's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of small projects, and I think they can get it, you can see the list is attached, and I think they can get them all done, based on my conversation with Joe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes. Number three, Illinois Department of Transportation Safe Routes to School Grant Application in the amount of $250,000 to construct a sidewalk, ramps, and related improvements in the city.
Yes, this was a, this is a project that we would like to advance. It was a discussion that took place back in August of this year, and the direction was to go ahead and pursue, pursue the grant. The $250,000 is an 80-20 matching grant, $200,000 from the state, $50,000 from the city, and you should have all received a copy of the site map indicating where the improvements are. You could see it. There was some discussion, I will say, between Alderman Went, myself, I actually, Alderman Went, and Mr. Kuhlambach with regard to this, and there were some questions raised regarding the, I'm trying to get a name of the location, Morgan Park, I believe it was, Morgan Park Project from 2019. So we're recommending approval for pursuing the grant. We had worked through, worked through the project with the school district, and came in agreement on proceeding with this project at this time.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Walden, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, there had been some discussion about the Morgan Park...
Yeah, there had been some discussion about the Morgan Park, and, and apparently that's not gonna be able to because we didn't get the right-of-way. And, uh, we did submit for part of that with the Buy State Grant, but the other half, apparently we still haven't gotten the, the right-of-way, so we'll have to take care of that later. But as far as selection of, of this location around Lincoln Irving, I, I went over and I drove it, uh, tonight before. I, I had asked a number of questions on how many actual blocks are bad in this area, uh, what exactly what we're doing. And that resulted in that map. I went over there and I looked at it, and, I mean, there's one intersection where it says we're replacing all those with ADA-compliant things. At that intersection, they're already all ADA-compliant things. And so, and I, I went down, and while I absolutely will say that there are some, uh, squares that need to be fixed, and quite a few, what we're gonna be doing is spending $312,000 to rip up a lot of really good squares, uh, to redo this, this whole area. I can't support this location when we've got, like, by Roosevelt and the High School, we've got areas where kids have to walk through grass or in the street to go from their house up to the, uh, to the main streets. This area, there's, there's sidewalks on both sides of the road, no problem. I, I do think that we need to fix those bad areas, but I think using this to fill in, in areas around, like I said, Roosevelt and, and the High School, I think is a much better, uh, location. I know that this is due on September 30th, but we should have sufficient time to, uh, to, to, to make that appraisal because, like I said, I think they just put this together recently for there. So I'm gonna vote, uh, actually, I'm gonna move to amend this that we switch it from, uh, the area around, uh, um, Lincoln Irving to over by Roosevelt and the High School.
Second.
Motion to amend by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Moyer. We get to discuss. Yes, Alderman Williams.
Is this coinciding with something the district may be doing at Lincoln Irving?
Well, it's, it's a, it's a highly populated school with a, a lot of different access points. And, um, all I know is that they would have been consulted.
So I know they've purchased a few homes there, and I don't know what their long-term plan is. I just didn't know if this fit in somehow with something they had planned. Just curious.
It, it, it could be, uh, a, a, a school that, um, in a part of town that doesn't always get as much attention getting attention this time. But that's pure speculation on my part. Mr. Timian?
For a little background, we did ask, uh, the, the school district, which school, specifically, the question was, which school has the highest amount of walkers to, to the schools? And candidates were, were Logan, um, uh, Lincoln Irving, Irving, obviously, and, and a few others. And they came back saying that this, this, this is the school that they would prefer had updated sidewalks. So, so I think that that is fueling the, um, the decision to focus on this school first.
Mr. Went.
And, and I understand that, and, and, but I think we've got to look, I mean, this is $312,000 with our $62,000 matching to the, the 250. That's a lot of money, and that's a, a lot of, um, uh, work we can get done in the city. Now, I will absolutely 100% to the point of, uh, an area not getting as much, um, love as, as other areas that we direct for next year because we always have, um, fixing and replacing a trip hazard area, uh, budgeted that we ask staff to focus in this area to get rid of those trips and the, and the bad squares. But I just can't, with good conscience, spend over $300,000 and be ripping out good squares where we have locations where we don't have sidewalks at all. And so that's why I, I moved to amend, ask staff to, to, to change it to that area.
Mr. Macias?
Um, you, you mentioned that some were good, some were bad. So it's not necessarily that, you know, you, you would have to take all of it. I, I would guess...
No, that's their intent. That's what the map says, that you take all of those out and...
But if, if you're recommending, but you're recommending moving all of it to somewhere else, taking all the way, all of it.
Yes, he is correct.
Yeah, the, the grant requires you to, to identify a location. So that, all of that $312,000 will have to be wherever the location we are. So, for example, one of the things we're doing over by the High School next year is putting in a, a bike path. That was because of one of the projects that got pushed. So we could utilize some of these funds for that, and then we could actually transfer the money that we have budgeted for that bike path, and then go and fix those squares over. So we could actually get both done and wind up with good area over by Lincoln Irving, save the, the spots that are fine, fix the, the bad spots, and get more bang for our buck. My concern is, the way that this grant is written, is if we identify Lincoln Irving, and this is our proposal, we, the proposal is, we're, we're ripping out the good and the bad, and just redoing the whole stretch.
Mr. Macias, are you asking him, though, why don't you make an amendment that says, uh, just take out the bad? Is that what you were trying to...
That's what I, but yeah, I didn't realize that you have to do it all or nothing. If you're saying the grant is written that way.
So it's my understanding is that you have to follow the state requirements, and a lot of those say you gotta have five foot. So some of those sidewalks over there are totally fine, but they're four foot. And so they're, they're gonna require you, engineering-wise, to, to rip out the whole area and replace it all with five foot. Where...
To be in compliance.
Uh, yeah, I'm okay with four foot here if we can get some areas where we got zero actually done.
Can we find out if Mr. Kuhlambach is with us?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, can you please answer some questions or provide some perspective?
Yeah. So some of the, some of the challenges that we have with these grants is, is like Alderman Went's saying, is the, uh, you know, we gotta follow guidelines, and we gotta make those connections. So over by Lincoln Irving, there would be complete replacement of those sidewalks, uh, without patching in between. I mean, that wouldn't be something that would be feasible with the, uh, with this program. At the same time, some of the challenges we would have qualifying for the project around the High School sometimes is that connectivity. There's a lot of infill we can do there, but it may not connect to a ADA-accessible sidewalk. So that wouldn't comply either. We'd have to continue that around into the school as well. So there are some challenges there that, that aren't just, that aren't cut and dried necessarily. Not saying it couldn't be done with some, uh, with some strategic planning and some, um, some planning. But, uh, um, in our discussions with the school and the recommendation we got from the school, the reason we went the direction we did, uh, in, in this application process, I don't know if we have time to complete the work that we've done so far to get the application done and into the, um, and by the deadline in two weeks. We've, uh, is, in the sense our meetings in August, we've, we've gotten support letters from PTA, superintendent, and principals. We're getting, we're collecting data for, for students walking. We're filling in a lot of the blanks right now. We've been doing a lot of late work for three to four weeks. That, that would be a challenge going forward if we, uh, if we need to, um, turn directions and, and change. But, but those are some of the challenges that with, with these programs, when we're spending federal dollars, we have to cross the Ts and we have to dot the Is and, and make those connections. And if we don't make the connections, we may not get the money at all. You know, we, our application may be denied, and, uh, you know, we filled it out the best we could to, uh, to give us the best shot at getting the funds at all.
Thank you very much. So if I'm hearing you right, your recommendation is to, um, do this work at Lincoln Irving because you think you have the best shot at receiving the funds with that project, and it is consistent with data from the school district and families in the area? Is that correct?
Yeah, we move forward with the location at the recommendation of the school and, and their consideration. And, uh, you know, yeah, there are definitely some good squares in there. There's, there's no doubt that there's some could be tied in. But, but overall, the, the sidewalk network there could use some upgrades. Yeah, one of the, one of the sections are already updated, and that one wouldn't need to be. But again, that's a very preliminary, uh, uh, scope of work. And, and as we fill it out and, and move it forward, whether we, whether we're awarded the entire amount or need the entire amount, our, our obligation would go down as that's kind of dialed in, but, uh...
I understand that, Mr. Kuhlambach.
That's why we brought it forward in that, in this, uh, location.
I, I understand that. What I just wanna make sure is, your reasoning for this location and this proposal is because of your confidence in the project being funded and the information, data gathering you've done through the school district and with families in the area?
Correct.
Thank you. Anything else on this amendment? Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I guess I'd like a little more clarity on where around Roosevelt you're proposing.
So, uh, it, I, I don't know if you've got access to our missing sidewalks map that is provided. Can you, do you know where that's at? Can you bring, bring that up? Um, hold on here. It is... Um, let's see what he's got. I didn't, sometimes he names it a, something that's easy to...
I guess I just wanna know what roads you're talking about leading to. Because every, there, as far as I can recall, everything around Roosevelt on that block proper has a sidewalk. So you're talking about feeder roads to Roosevelt?
Yes, yeah. Like, all the neighborhoods where the kids would actually walk through. I, I'm not talking about 23rd Avenue.
Right.
I'm talking about all the neighborhoods...
Talking about the next one, which is 25th or something.
So, I mean, there is, uh, 35th doesn't have any sidewalk on it. 35th Street Court doesn't. 36th Street, uh, we've got a, a score of 40 for, for that one. 19th Avenue, there's no sidewalk up and down there. There's also on 20, or sorry, on 33rd Street and 32nd Street, no sidewalks. There's no sidewalk. If you're, for that entire neighborhood of Green Acres and actually where Sam lives, uh, I mean, they live two blocks away from the school, but you gotta walk through a field to get there, or you gotta drive. I mean, so that would be another location that you could really branch an entire neighborhood. And that would be an easy one.
So that, it's very clear that you have good ideas about where some, some of the need is. The question really on the table is, do you wanna take staff's recommendation or not? That, that's really what's on the table. Mr. Macias, did you have a hand?
Yeah, this sounds like, those are good ideas, but for the sake of this grant, um, I would rather not risk losing this and also disenfranchise, uh, one of our most underserved populations that go to Lincoln Irving. My kid goes there, and I, when I drop her off, I see all these parents walking their kids, actually little siblings walking, uh, with their older siblings up the hill on 8th. And I run through there, and there are some areas beyond just what's, uh, being, uh, highlighted here that could be fixed. But, uh, I also would hate to unintentionally, uh, send some bad optics that we're taking this, there's, there's a recommendation there, uh, from staff. They've done their due diligence, and now we take a resource away.
One more comment, Mr. Went.
A potential resource.
No, and, and, and I understand what you're com, and that's why I said we would go and we would fix the blocks and, and, and make it to, um, so that it is smooth, that you keep the good blocks and, and, uh, and switch out the bad blocks. The problem is, I mean, if you look at this map, there is nothing in here in which there are missing things where kids have to walk in the street. If you're in a wheelchair in some of these areas, there's not an option on one, either side of the street. And so what you're saying is, and, and I understand this is staff's recommendation, but I think it was based on just calling up the school, and the school doesn't have the resources that we have that we should be taking into consideration, that we have a global view of what's going on. Because the next time you get up in this neighborhood and you see kids walking on the street or somebody in a wheelchair out in the middle of the street because they can't get from point A to point B, while they ask, why, why over by Lincoln Irving? Are we tearing out good sidewalks? And then...
Well, the answer you gave was, we're tearing it out because it has to be ADA-compliant, not because we just wanna tear out good sidewalks.
That's not true.
You just said it had to be wider.
No. If you're using this grant, you have to meet, what's it called? The PASA or the OSHA, whatever. It is a requirement that is beyond what the law is. It's not what the ADA law is. It is beyond what the law is. But it's important to have correct information, and so you can't say...
This is true, but I want to remind you that the school district does know that there are families in the Roosevelt area that are concerned about their walkability because it was brought up at community, um, conversations of a year and a half ago or more. And still, that's not what their recommendation was. So, because they base it, it sounds like from Mr. Kuhlambach, on the amount of walkers. So you're, you could also say there is an argument to, uh, spending the most money where the most need is, whereas you, or rather than spending that money that you're talking about where there is less need.
Joe just said there's a possibility that he's going to, to, actually, it's not gonna cost that much, and he's gonna reduce it. So it's not even leveraging the most amount of 80/20 that we've got, that we don't know what this is going to cost. And my guess is, it's probably not gonna cost $312,000 to do the, that, that, what they're proposing. Maybe it is, but it's gonna wind up costing us, basically, taking up more good sidewalk to meet this, this higher standard. Whereas if we go to the other location, we can actually really fill in and not have situations in which you talk about maybe not very many kidders are walking, but they're not walking because there's no sidewalks to get there. There's no way to walk there.
All right, thank you for your perspective. Anyone else? Mr. Moyer?
I was gonna say exactly that. I think you, you're, you're gonna end up not getting the data that there are walkers because they can't walk. So you get a lot of people who just, just choose not to walk. But I, I understand there's a time constraint.
Okay.
Where, where we are. Yeah, and I live basically at 36th and 19th. I'm two houses in from there, so I'm very familiar with the traffic patterns, and we walk our cubs into school. And, you know, looking at, you know, especially 19th is a place where there's probably a very serious need because that becomes a major, major threat around the Moline. But, um, I think working forward with the recommendation from the school district has to weigh into a big piece of this decision. And that's, that's what's gonna drive my vote tonight, though I do agree we need to, um, look at that street. I see that need. But I think that, that working alongside that recommendation is what's gonna drive my vote.
All right. Any further questions? Okay, all in favor?
Your Honor, are, are you asking, are we voting on the amendment?
The amendment. Thank you for clarifying, yes. So all in favor on Mr. Went's amendment? Uh, can I do a roll call, please?
Alderman Williams?
Nay.
Macias?
Nay.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Nay.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Nay.
Two ayes, six nays.
That motion fails. So we're back to the original motion on the table. Any conversation there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number four. Surrounding property owners consent for a Class B liquor license to be issued for 2900 River Drive Moline. Margaret?
You want me to do it, Margaret?
Or Bob?
Sure, I, I mean, this would be a pleasure. We had many lengthy discussions with Sean Daly regarding, regarding possible uses at 2900 River Drive. And much to his credit, he's come back with a request to actually put in a liquor establishment there, a bar at 2900 in what remains as a small portion of the first floor commercial property. He has secured two restaurants, one being the barbecue restaurant from, I believe it's East Moline, who would like to be at this location, as well as a Burmese restaurant. So he basically would have, I believe it would be four restaurants and one bar then at that location. And he's requesting approval for this permit and I recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Went. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Moyer?
Thank you. The, so the Class C that he was asking for, it's been dropped. He's not looking for that.
Yeah, it doesn't exist anymore.
And then, um. Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Before I read this next one, I believe I was, uh, told. Cat got my tongue there, that we need a motion to take this off the table because this was tabled previously. Okay. And that is amending Chapter 4 alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinance's artistic and personal service exception.
Move from the table.
Thank you, Mr. Went and seconded by Mr. Moyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's back on the table. Anyone want a motion to approve?
You have a motion to approve?
Motion by Alderman Moyer?
Second.
Second by Alderman Went. Any discussion?
I.
Mr. Schmidt?
I appreciate going back, looking at this. I think this answered a lot of our questions we had at the last meeting. Specifically to whether our salon exception worked, which we've learned it does not. So, and I think this does a good job of fixing that one issue. And I had asked about this before and my only thought is that I think we still would like, would, should keep moving forward on an opportunity for those type of establishments who also want to sell alcohol with, with something more similar to what was originally proposed. I think this has kind of split, obviously, into two separate things and I think that makes sense. So I'm supportive here and just look forward to the continuing process as that moves through.
Okay.
Thank you. And our thought after your discussion was that original amendment, I defend O'Brien, O'Brien and Moyer. So it does make sense to.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes. Number six, amending Chapter 4 alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinance's single syrup packaged. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Moyer? Second? Second, Alderman Went. Yes, Mr. Went.
This was brought up because it was something that I thought was important because we were running into issues where people would call up and say, hey, I just went and bought a hundred dollars worth of grocery and bought a little thing for a mixed drink or for a friend's birthday or whatever. And then they told me I had to buy another one and it just didn't seem to, to make a whole lot of sense if the, the purpose is for vagrancy and, and that kind of thing. So I had suggested that, like we have the requirement, if the total amount of alcohol is five bucks or over, you're exempt. I had suggested that if your total grocery bill is over $25, then, you know, that's real easy. The person rings it up, it's over 25 bucks, then you don't have to buy an extra one. If it's under 25 bucks, then, then, then maybe you would have to. However, this is written that says it's $25 of non-alcoholic stuff. So if you wind up having $26.94 and you've got $2.16 of alcohol, then, you know, what spread? So I would like to move to amend this to say that your total bill is $25 or over, you're exempt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Discussion on the amendment. Mr. Moyer?
If we weren't like that, though, is it going to change, is it going to change the other exceptions? Like, will you still be able to do like the minimum $5 purchase? You won't have to get up to 25?
Right.
That's fair.
So if it is an additional exception.
Condition.
We could use any of that as.
Okay.
Mr. Timian?
Thank you, your honor. I, I do want to mention that Director of Government Relations from Hy-Vee emailed us all tonight about this very thing and, and mentioned that they would have a difficult time enforcing this with their current IT infrastructure. And I think if Hy-Vee is going to have a hard time with that, everyone's going to have a hard time with that. So I, I do think that this amendment is a, I reached out and asked him details about what the specifics were. I think this amendment is a good compromise and would probably be a lot easier to enforce from both our point of view and their point of view. Another option would be to, and, and this gentleman has offered to have a sit down and talk about compromises, so we do have an opportunity to amend this further. But I think that this is a very good middle ground between those.
Okay. Mr. Moyer?
Hi, so, and that's a good point because in Hy-Vee, you could go spend $500 on groceries in the store, walk over the alcohol and be told no, you know? So I, I don't, I don't know how to solve that, but.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Macias?
Yeah, and I would hate to put, you know, another set of rules that they have to train people and who's going to enforce these things when some of their, you know, staff gets things wrong. It is worth, you know, talking about this through more, especially for grocery stores, which I see them differently than the gas station, you know?
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the amendment that states that changes the language to $25 of total grocery bill rather than the total non-alcoholic grocery?
Did you call it still to vote?
All in favor for that amendment?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Do we need to hear it again?
It's 25 of only non-alcohol items.
No.
Not in total.
His amendment is $25 of the total grocery bill.
They shouldn't have to be math to figure out what part is what.
Excellent, thanks.
Okay, so now we're ready to vote. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. We don't have to go back to the other motion, correct? All right, number seven.
Now we have to vote on the amended motion.
I'm just, we just voted on the amendment.
No, you voted on the amendment.
All right. Moyer D.
Amended motion.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the amended.
Discussion?
Yes. This is why I said, are we okay? Okay?
So I think the amendment just made is very helpful. I, when reading this, I think it is a good intention. I think it is a very, very challenging to enforce. And I'm concerned we're putting a burden in, in place that makes it just that they won't honor the exception. I guess, I, and now to hear that we've gotten an email that with, with further concerns from, I imagine, one of our bigger liquor sellers in, in the community. So I'd like to make a motion to table this so we can seek additional input from businesses in the community.
New discussion? Okay, so motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Macias to table this and gather more information. Any discussion on that?
There's no discussion on it.
There's discussion because of the amendment, got it?
No, it's because it's tabled.
Yes, that's what I meant. It's already a long night. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Nay.
Timian?
Nay.
Moyer?
Nay.
O'Brien?
Nay.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Four ayes, four nays.
Aye. So that motion is tabled so I can bring it back with more information. Your commentary.
Was that indefinite table?
I did not define a time.
Okay.
So, I guess, but.
In the ether.
Okay.
Intending to return soon.
Yes, I believe I stated and bring back with information when I stated it. Number seven, amending Chapter 4 alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinance, Class C cap increase.
This is simply an increase in the, in the Class C licenses to Allopertriple Inc., which is one of businesses, Watermark, Watermark Corners, to obtain the license. So we'd be increasing the number of licenses from 34, that stands today, to 35.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Any discussion? Mr. Timian?
Counsel, my significant other works as the manager of this store. Should I be, all right, then I'm recusing myself.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Timian. Mr. Went?
I just want to get a clarification. So this will allow them to serve alcohol there or just packaged?
No.
That's why I want to make sure.
I told you to talk about Chapter 4, I'm sorry.
That's why, just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yes, would you like the clerk to answer that?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Oh, I'm sorry. They want onsite or on-premise consumption as well for special events that they might have there.
So that's option eight, though.
So, so that's why I want to make sure, so they're going to do this and then?
And package sales as well.
Package sales and then option eight, so they could do?
They're going to do package sales and the poor option.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because Amy at one point said, oh, we're going to be serving it. And I'm like, if we're just doing, okay.
Yeah, you are correct. You are correct. And, and I, I just want to throw out there, I really like that, this is the method that, how this works. That's, we're doing this for a business that's diversifying after being impacted by the COVID pandemic. So this is how it should work, so. Any other commentary or question? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, that motion passes. The vote was seven to one, seven ayes, one nay.
Your honor, six, six.
Oh, six, sorry, thank you, six. You got it. It's a team effort here. All right, do we have another this evening? I don't believe so. All right, we're moving to informational. Chief Galt, the award and acceptance of the Illinois Department of Transportation STEP grant in the amount of $12,000.
This is an annual grant that we have historically received and it is used to pay, compensate the city for the overtime for traffic enforcement unit. So we're looking for, I guess we're just looking for approval to submit. Accept, rather, accept the grant, my mistake.
Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Mr. Moyer. Any discussion? This motion is to accept the grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Onto our work session at long last.
At long last.
Mr. Vitas, strategic plan, goal prioritization.
I would be more than happy to and it's my pleasure. Hopefully bring this project to a happy ending for the city. Here to do this, I can stand a little bit on my feet. So let's get rid of this. Did I, did I do that? Oh, you started it. Well, thank you very much because I was thinking I didn't push to plug me on. So, all right, well, very good. You should have all received on Friday a copy of the final draft for your consideration of the 2022-2024 Strategic Plan document, which, as you know, started way back in May following the election. And it is the culmination of work, many hours of work between yourselves initially and then your department directors and their supporting staff to get us where we are today. A lot of this was originally done as well by Marty Banix here before he left. And this is the culmination of not only all of that body of work, but then input received from the Aldermen after that presentation and after our last discussion. So I took it upon myself, the work with Macy, to go through and modify this document. As you know, we started out with, I believe it was five, a long way. You're right, it's the button that has no ink left, not paint. Now, hope you don't object to the photo, it's yours. Looks good. Count my compliments to you. But moving right ahead, you can see that we laid it out pretty much, the overview of where, where we started with the plan. Basically, setting up the city's mission, vision and core values. Taking a look at the overall, the overarching strategic objectives, establishing strategic goals throughout this report, there's probably well over 100 plus goals in here in focus. So the number actually did grow based on input from council. And I will say this, that a lot of the input I received is in the document. If you see something that's not there because it's not really, it's not broadly defined as a goal, it might be a task underneath the goal. So I had to filter through all of those recommendations and suggestions and then I have saved them on another document that exists. And those tasks will become part of the action plan, which, which I will be developing as we go through completion of the budget process. So you established, established your mission. I put this graphic together. This is not the first time I've done this graphic. I think it answers a lot of concerns or questions that I've heard since I've been here. But this basically is important because this, this describes the whole process because it's a living process. It doesn't have a little start and, and each part of this process has a starting timeframe and an ending timeframe. But this process I developed after many, many years of doing this, not only here in the US, but doing this kind of work overseas. So what we're looking at in terms of processes, of course, there's the environmental assessment cycle. And the importance of that is that that's when we're really reaching out and doing several things. We're taking a look at our, at our financial situation. And we're, we're assessing our finances to see where we are at the very beginning of the process. We also take a look at our organization, organization, organization as a whole and we evaluate it. So we're looking at staffing levels, we're looking at structure and reporting in terms of how we, how it all fits together to deliver the results of a strategic plan. Okay? We then go into reaching out to the citizens, whether it's through survey, whether it's listening posts or any other community engagement practices that we would like to utilize. We're reaching out to them to get their input, which you did. We're also reaching out to our businesses and other key stakeholders so that they also have input going into. Once we got that information, and you did do that, maybe a little differently than an outside consultant would have done it, but you did do a lot of the tasks that you would be done. Then we get into this part where we are right now, and that is establishing a strategic plan. You establish what the city's core values were, you establish what the city's mission was, you establish the five pillars, you lowered the five pillars down to three pillars. And this plan represents the removal of the two and the convergence of all of those goals into the three pillars that the council approved. And then you also approved your own strategic objectives and those objectives are scattered throughout all of the pillars now. These charts on the wall over here are kind of just like an infographic, a snapshot of everything that's in there from where we start. The real body of work is on the wall in the file cabinet next to Macy's desk. You can see all the scribbling on it. But we went ahead and you had the objectives. So then you get into setting the goals. So during the process, and this is kind of pre-date, the goals were pretty much laid out. There were a significant body of goals. I think Marty said there were 89 when he was here on his last day. Beyond that, we then incorporated input from council between that time and today and brought that in, as I pointed out. Again, some of the goals that were submitted or some of the things that were suggested, they're really projects that are, you know, within a goal, comfortably fit below a goal and they would be identified there as a task that would be undertaken by, by the staff based upon the adoption of a budget. Because you have to have the funding, if they're the funding. So that's why when I put this together, I also kind of gave you a timeline. I don't plan on necessarily leaving those fiscal years inside these circles under all of these goals. That's for informational purposes for tonight so that you're able to know when those items were recommended to be started in any given fiscal year, whether it's fiscal '22, '23, or '24. Keep in mind, this is a three-year plan. A lot of these plans are typically five years, they're much longer. So the three years is a short, but it also ties out to the three-year budget process that you asked Gerald to work on before I got here. Okay, so it's all building together. So we do have the goals. Then beyond the goals, then you're going to get into the budget process. We are, you know, heavily into budget, we're going to be super heavy into budget in October. So a lot of what we approve here tonight going forward is going to be used as we develop and refine the fiscal '22 budget as well as extending into fiscal '23 and '24. So these goals have dollars attached to them, which I'll explain how that works later. So we get into the budget development cycle, we've got the capital improvement plan and budget. And it also would include capital equipment replacement schedules coming out of fleet. We have the organizational delivery systems. I mean, these are, these are basically, how do we deliver service, service decisions? Whether we're increasing service levels, decreasing service levels. Snow and ice control is just an example of a delivery system, all right? Then we got the organizational structure. The structure of the organization has to match up with the goals of the organization. You know, we can't sit there and say we're going to do Project X and then we don't have the. You know, we can't sit there and say, we're going to do project X, and then we don't have the manpower to actually perform that project. Or we have to go out and hire consultants to do that work. So it's at this point, we're refining even the structure of the organization to fit this plan, to deliver the results of this plan. And then you have the action plan, and I know all of them went, this is something that, you know, you're gonna like, because you've talked to me about it. I even talked about it, I think, when I was interviewing here. The action plan is the final piece, is the final circle, is the outgrowth of literally this whole process from the leadership down to phase one, down to phase two. We get the budget and it's done, you know, the work plan is going to drill down very succinctly in terms of, you know, the pillar, it's gonna hit on the objective, it's gonna hit on the goal, there's gonna be prescriptions behind those, so you know what they are. It is going to assign staff responsibility by department, by individual. So if there are multiple individuals involved in a project, they will be associated with that project. They then understand their relationship to the, the city's strategic plan and delivering results under the plan. So there's a lot of buy-in happening then with the staff, and that, that goes for every employee of the city, basically. Because they're all, they're all affected by the plan. So we'll get into that, then we actually lay out the timeframes, and my suggestion is, we're gonna lay timeframes out in the work plan by quarters. You know, I think monthly is a little bit, a little overkill, but we will set out projects with start dates and end dates that will span either an entire fiscal year, uh, from first quarter to the third, fourth quarter, or it might span multiple fiscal years, because some of these things are like pro- programmatic. Programs don't have end dates, programs typically run, projects start and they end. So we'll be, we'll be making sure that that's in there. And then most importantly, tying into the budget, the action plan will actually identify the fiscal resources that are, that have been budgeted. And it'll, it'll also identify the source of those funds, whether it's gonna be ARC dollars, whether it's gonna be the general fund, whether it's gonna be a water and sewer utility fund, whatever the funding sources will be identified for each and every one of these goals for fiscal twenty-two. And then you'll have an action plan that is updated monthly. You'll be able to know, speak to any of your constituents and say, this is where we, where we are at, you know, as of today. Yes, we started that, you know, in the middle of the second quarter, and it's not gonna be done until the, the middle of the third quarter. Or no, we have not started that. So, which then brings us to phase, the final, going from phase three, we go up to the final phase, and that's performance measurement. This is something that a lot of big cities do, except something that a lot of cities don't do. You know, and, and this is really where the rubber hits the road, because now we're looking at what we've done through this whole process, this whole cycle. And we're digging, look at, at, at results, we're measuring results. We're doing a self-assessment, we're sitting down, we're looking at, you know, how well did we do? We're gonna report out annually how, how we did, you know, we'll be special reports issued that mirror this plan and mirror that work plan and are supported by your annual budget and your capital improvement plan and budget. So we'll do the self-assessment, we'll do internal evaluations, evaluating my performance, evaluating everyone's performance. Because everybody has a role in, in the success or failures of this plan that's been set out. Keep in mind, the whole community bought this plan, they bought in, they contributed, they, they provided input. The more you do this, I think the more input you'll start to get from residents, they'll get excited about it. They'll wanna be a part of the dialogue. So when you're having discussions about sidewalks, and I know that's a big issue here, you know, you don't have them everywhere. I personally don't know, you know, I saw there was over a hundred miles of missing sidewalk, that's a lot of sidewalk. But when that decision was made to build those subdivisions, sidewalks weren't required. It's an afterthought. Modern subdivisions are built with sidewalks, and the help was required to put them in, and then you just fire, you're paying for those, right? And then they get dedicated as a part of the right away to the city. So we're going back and cleaning up decisions from a very, very long time ago. I don't know, for example, around Roosevelt, you know, in some of these streets, how many students actually live there from the school district right now? They could probably help us with that data, so that we're making data-driven decisions in terms of where we should allocate those resources, allocate the dollars to achieve what you're trying to get done. You have a big challenge in front of you, it's a big city, it's an old city, it's got a lot of aged infrastructure, and we have resources that can go so far, right? So this actually helps, helps us to make those kind of data-driven decisions. So once we get the performance measurement cycle done, and we've done our self-assessment, our internal evaluations, you know, it starts all over again, it really does start all over again, because you can update the plan. You can update it annually, as projects are completed and goals are achieved, you can go and you can have a discussion and start it again, or you can wait three years and go back at it in three years, because we are gonna be measuring. So at the, at the bottom line is, we'll come back in and we'll just continue this cycle as an ongoing process. And that, that to me is probably the best graphic that describes the way I'm used to, uh, not running not only projects, major projects, multimillion-dollar projects for the government, but also running multimillion-dollar enterprises for local governments. So you did establish your core values, and you can see them there, I don't think I need to repeat those, because you know them well. You have the three pillars instead of the five, so we brought it down to basically infrastructure, which is a very broad category, and a quality of place, which is another very broad category, and then the economy, which is a broad category. So underneath there, you're going to have a wide variety and a lot of room to insert objectives, which is what, what we did. We took your objectives, and there they are, we laid them out. They're actually sitting on the wall over there, you can see all of the objectives, from, uh, technology all the way down to corridors of opportunity. And I think they work. I, I will say professionally, having worked on this side by side with Macy, and then even Janine was involved at one point, uh, working on this, because it was very complex to move all the moving parts back together. Uh, I took some liberty and rewrote, you know, massaged, uh, some of the writing so that it would be a little smoother and cleaner. I don't mind when people rewrite my things, I hope you don't mind my changes. So we get to technology, your first objective, technology enhancement, and there were four goals that, that, that came out. You have the, uh, acquire parks and recreation point of sale system, uh, in fiscal twenty-three. You've got to develop a library technology plan in fiscal twenty-two. I know, I know, I'm talking to Brian quite a bit, that they are doing that, we've got great communications, the same with Eric. The other one, explore alternative conveyance and treatment technologies, I mean, for fiscal twenty-three, that's coming, it's coming from Tony. And then for your citywide broadband installation, that's coming to you next week. I'm gonna give you that good news next week, all right? We're gonna get that, we're gonna get that baby out here, and it's wide open to discuss, and you guys are gonna make decisions. And, and it's exciting, it really is.
People are giggling.
It's exciting. It's tough, tough, there's some tough choices to make, and you look tough. So if you're happy with those, with those four goals under technology, uh, let me know. If anybody objects to those, or have any comments? Nope?
I'm just, just double checking, so in a sense, there, one aspect of prioritization is communicated by the timeframes, the fiscal years that you've placed on here.
Correct.
So our job is to, uh, either be in congruence with that, those timelines, or ask you questions about why that year, why not this year, et cetera?
Exactly, I mean, we're at the, we're at the final stage, so, um, we're not gonna at this late stage, especially with the budget. I mean, that's my next major project, Carol wants to sit down and start that, uh, and that's gonna be all-consuming. You know, so this is kind of that hanging participle that has to be closed up, so that we can move forward. We can add goals, I added a goal today, and I'll show you where, as we go through this, because I think it was a goal that got missed. But, uh, if you wanna add a goal, this is the opportunity to do it. If you don't like a goal, this is time for you to speak up and say, get it out of there. Or if you think that the, the timelines are, are too aggressive, there's a lot of fiscal twenty-two goals. You know, if you think some of these should be moved back, we can move them back.
Mr. Wynn, do you have a question?
So, in, there, there's some things that aren't included in here, so like, for instance, uh, one of the things that we had was to, review or, or find a way to do monthly billing for water. It's not anywhere in here. Would that be under technology, would that be under what, infrastructure, would that be under? I, I, there, there's just quite a few things that aren't in here, and I'm not sure if they're under other broader, like, you know, like, uh...
It would be a task, they, that, that's actually something that we would do in-house as a task. Moving, moving from your quarterly to, to a monthly water billing system, and that's more about municipal operations than it is technology. That's a process, that's a process improvement that we're looking at.
So something like that wouldn't?
It would be in the work plan, it would be in the work plan, because all of them are, they're all identified. They're all in here, and I went through and, you know, made it, had to make a tough decision, I mean, not all of the things rise to a big broad goal. If you want it to be a goal, this is your plan, it could be brought in.
But you're saying it's, it's at a level that it's so specific that it, it moved, for you, it moved into the task document.
I think the goals need to be broader than they need to be.
Got it.
Like effective and efficient municipal services? I'd probably, and you can see this thing, it's loaded, we'll get to this one, it's loaded with projects.
I have another question, Mr. Moyer.
Yeah, and I think that's great, but when we don't see what the tasks are, then we don't know if they're still in here or not. So it, it becomes really hard, like, I, I assume that, um, like, the ADUs and the tiny houses, that, that's gonna end up being a task-level thing.
Yeah.
I can't follow where it's gonna come out at.
I mean, I could, I could go through this whole list, or even we have somebody make a copy of it, right now.
Well, I think this, this is Macy, Macy must have laid this out, I think, I think it's really nice, it's really great, but it's, you, you, um, and, and it really is easy to follow, and I really appreciate one-six.
Oh, yeah, that was all you.
But, uh...
That's, that's the Moyer, that's the Moyer page.
But there's some of the specific, there's those specific level things that, like, uh, Western Illinois or the Illinois aviation network.
That's around, there's, that's the point, is it, there's a, there's a perspective here, uh, that you, you learn in some government training. If you stay on the balcony and not get on the dance floor, uh, then you're able to follow our, your role properly. And what's happening, it sounds like, is there's more specificity you're looking for, but that's really in the tasks that staff has to do. And he's telling you, he's put them in that document, he's not deleted anything. They're in there, they're just not in this, what you see, these are broader, like, this is where your ADUs, I literally wrote it, ADUs.
I'm good with that.
Update zoning code, does that make sense?
It's just nice to see it in there somewhere, like, if I see it in there, then I'm just like, yeah, this is great, I love it.
Well, so I guess what you could say is, you have to trust Mr. Vitas, that he broadly titled it, but it's in the task document.
It's, it's all in the document. I have not removed anything that was suggested.
Mr. Schmidt.
So as we move toward the task plan.
Right.
Is that going to remain a document that we would have visibility to as well?
Yeah.
Because some of these, that is where I think a lot of those, because I agree with taking that, this higher, but this is where we need to start.
This is at this level, and it's not down here.
And so that is where it is coming, we have to see that as well.
Yeah, so for, for example, the one, the one objective I thought was missing, and it was bothering me, and I went in and I added it, is actually, I think it's three point, three point two, that's it, yes, talent detract. There was only, out of all the input, there was like two, there were two, you know, overarching goals, develop new city recruitment strategies. So, I mean, that's across the board, and then establishing utilities, laboratory and treatment plant internship. You know, that, that, that's a very specific goal for, for our, our enterprise operations. The goal that I didn't think was here was explore workforce development with academic institutions. That would include Black Hawk College, that would include Western Illinois University, that would include the high school. It might include, remember, I didn't say local, so it might include an NIU, it might include Iowa State. So it gives us the ability to say, if we drill down on that goal, you know, what would we like to accomplish within there? Some of the tasks, like, like you suggested, WIU wasn't mentioned in there. You're right, I didn't see it, and this was something I, I, I saw today and thought about over the weekend, so I gotta add that back in.
Okay.
Yeah, it would look like that.
Yeah, well, and, and so, so that, that, that's exactly where I was kinda getting to, because that was the thing that I had, uh, circled on here, was that it didn't include Western. But then, but then we say, well, we're not gonna get into the minutia, but, you know, establish a utilities, laboratory, and treatment plant internship? I mean, that's super specific.
That was one, was one of the goals that we inherited, you're right.
But, but I, I guess that's where I'm, I'm getting somewhat confused, is like, we're talking about, you know, making a goal that we want to have at least a hundred and fifty new residential units downtown in the next four years, or whatever the goal, like, that was one that was submitted, that didn't make anywhere on, on the list here. But that's like a goal, that's a strategic plan, but establishing a, uh, an internship program, that, and so that's why I, I'm just really confused on where we're at with this, and then on, I, I guess, I, I, I don't know what we're trying to accomplish, because there are a lot of things that just aren't on here, and, and if the idea is just, well, this encompasses everything, then I'm not really sure what we're accomplishing by going through this.
Yeah, I would have liked to, let me address that.
Okay.
I would have liked to spend two days, two Saturdays, and do nothing but have this dialogue and this discussion. That's how this should have been done before I got here.
I don't disagree.
And that, that to me was, has been the challenge all along, is that if a process that normally follows to prepare a document like this, you might spend the first day doing your mission, you might spend it doing the vision, you might be laying out your core, your core values, you may get to that point. You know, and then you, and then building off of that, you're gonna come back and spend the entire day deliberating, you know, and going up and putting stickers on, on what you as council members think are important. Just the same way we treat the general public when we have charades, right? But that, that, that's the opportunity that's missed. So at the late stage we're at, I took it upon myself to try and massage this thing into something meaningful. That's why I created a secondary document that has everything on it. There's nothing missing here, and I'm more than happy to share this with you. This is the kind of document that, that the department directors are very well aware of, you know, their projects. They came up with this list of eighty-nine, and you guys all came up with probably another forty. So there is a real significant body of work here. Not all of it's fundable in any given year, not all of it's gonna be achievable in three years either, some of it goes, goes way out there. Some of it will become a program, you know, and you'll fund that program, and it will continue. Like the land bank, the land bank is a program, right? Establishing the land bank, that's going to probably happen just before this plan goes into effect, because there was, we've been working on it for a long time. That's a $250,000 commitment out of ARC money that, that my predecessor, you know, set aside. There's a couple set of sides, that's one of them.
But we got a grant for that, from IDA, it shouldn't be from ARC.
I heard it was ARC money.
No, it's IDA.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just saying what I heard today.
It is IDA money.
Maybe it's matching, maybe it's a matching grant, I don't know.
You have another comment, Mr. Moyer?
Yeah.
So, so...
I, I do, I think this is really good, and, and, and if everything falls in the task, that's great. And, and to me, it doesn't matter that there's a ton of things that say twenty-twenty-two on them, because you do have the process, or you go to budget, you'll look at staffing, and you'll come back and say, some of these are gonna have to get cut, we understand that.
Right.
So I'm, 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 I'm happy, I'm happy.
Okay. I would say, I would say if you want, if this one that you're mentioning that is, sounds very microscopic, the laboratory one.
This is your plan, I'll add and subtract.
Well, yeah, yeah, there could be all sorts of imperatives.
Thank you, because I'm trying to come up with a solution. There are some that we could, we could just massage the language just a little bit, so they are more broad, so that the, the specificity of this can stay in the task. So if you just said, explore or establish apprenticeship programs, uh, or appropriate apprenticeship programs or internships, that's broad enough.
Yes, it is.
So under talent detract, so I would like to suggest that. Anyone else with a comment or question on that, this piece of where we're at? We're out, I, it sounds to me like we're understanding, based on what you said, Mr. Moyer, that the timelines are okay, I'm not hearing anybody grumble about where, what years things are in, that things should move up at all.
So we will have establish apprenticeship and internships, uh, or establish, basically, or explore and establish.
Yeah.
And then a task under that would be very specifically Tony's job, and that would be to work with HR for the utility laboratory and treatment plant, okay? The same way I might reach out and have an, an executive level intern out of, out of a local university. Okay? The same way I might reach out and have an, an executive level intern out of, out of a local university, right?
Right.
Cause we do have interns working here, but we don't really take full advantage of those opportunities. Those are your future employees, if you're lucky enough to get them, before they move out of the area. Right? So.
Mr. Schmidt, did you have a comment?
Yeah, my, the only thing I see in here is there are still some things I think that are a little too specific. I think a lot of those we got out and got rid of. Um, I do think the internship program was the, the most glaring example, but.
Yes, I would agree.
At the same, I think there, there, you know, when we have to draw that line between tasks and programs and what you're building, I think we've done a, a pretty good job, and that doesn't mean it's perfect and won't need to be revisited, but I think I'd, I'd look forward to saying like, well, what's missing? Like the one, the, the one we added, the one we've adjusted, if there's anything else missing, and then moving forward so we can get to the task plan, because I think that's gonna simplify a lot of these pieces too.
Yeah, I think a lot of those, yeah. A lot of those tasks are gonna come back as part of the budget. They're gonna fit underneath these roles.
Yeah.
And you're gonna see the dollars attached to them. So, you know, I, I don't think anything's been lost to science here. I think we would be very careful about making sure everybody's input got into this document at, at this level. Then when we get to that next phase, when we get into the budgeting, is when you're gonna start to see these tasks being included and, and funding requests specifically for them. You could have multiple, you're gonna have multiple tasks under these goals, and that is really the intention. The goal is more at a higher level.
So the council members do have an opportunity at budget time if they're looking through that and they don't see something that they thought was on the tasks
Right.
document. They can bring it up then, and we'll just address it then.
Yeah, nothing is cast in stone, in, 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 in my opinion. I think we have to have something cast to start with. What that gives us the ability, we have to, it's a tool that we, like a budget. Budget is a guide, and you amend it. This is a, this is also a guide, and you can amend this too. So I think, I think that's kind of where we're at. You're doing two different things simultaneously, a new strategic plan and a new three-year budget. These two things have to kind of fit together somehow.
Yeah, Mr. White.
Yeah, but, but there are some things that aren't budgeted, or like, the, the goal for more residential development downtown. That, that wouldn't be something that would be a budgeted item, but it would be clearly something where we would update our economic incentive, uh, policy. And we would tell staff, say, hey, this is what the goal is and what you should be focusing on.
How do you, how do you achieve the goal of attracting people or, or developers to develop residential downtown?
Right. And, and so it would be a guide for our policies, but it wouldn't necessarily be something that would show up in the budget specifically.
That's on three point four.
Yeah, it's right here.
Examine downtown living opportunities, housing plans.
Exactly.
Yeah.
No, but that, that's what, uh, it was just an example, but because there, there are things that aren't, and there are things that, that do cost money.
Well.
Well, some things are sunk cost. I mean, administrative time is still, is still administrative, it's still a cost. You know, and in the private sector, it gets factored in. I mean, the level of effort in order to achieve some of these things gets identified, it gets measured. I mean, I could literally have people sitting there, you know, providing me with documents and the level of effort on every project they work on. You know, and we do do that. We do that on community development block grant programs, how much time people are spending. I mean, I don't think we wanna drill down at that level, because I think people will walk. They, they, they're, they're busy enough, right?
I think, uh, I have two, uh, thoughts on, as we move forward.
Yeah.
Um, it sounds like we were getting more comfortable as a group with the level that this, these are at. But we still have questions or concerns that, that we need to make sure we're not missing some things. However, I think we can build into the plans for next year, it's stopping back. Like, you have a semi-annual report timeline, right?
Right.
Along those lines is a great time for the council to have a semi-annual check on where are we at with some of those tasks or things we wanted to see. And, you know, that's our job to, to, to check, double check on it. So we have that. And then number two, um, as we move forward and see how things go with the work or task plan, action plan, and your four-phase process, Mr. Vitas, we always can come as a council and say, let's do it with a professional strategic planner this time. We didn't have that option this time.
Do that.
And, but we certainly can do that. We don't have to wait three years to do that, but at least we know what our guideposts are if we're comfortable at this stage, and, you know, formally adopting this next week.
I see this as a first step in a refinement process to, to re-engineer everything that we do, you know, as, as a functioning administration. There's gonna be a lot of process engineering going on here at reprocess.
Mr. O'Brien.
Bob, do you have a feel for, I guess, feedback from staff, how realistic? I mean, there, there's a lot here for staff. I mean, obviously, there's a lot that we've given staff to do. And I, I know we're getting staffed up again, but many of these are gonna be new people, right?
We're gonna have a lot of new people who are going through transition, that is correct.
Right. And we've got some pretty lofty goals here, which you aim high. We wanna do, we wanna aim high with our goals.
Yes.
And we understand that, God forbid, some of this might not, you know, get done.
Yeah, you don't wanna, you don't wanna fail the plan, but you don't wanna plan to fail. That's my caution here.
It's not all gonna happen.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that if we, if we reach too far with all of that hundred-and-twenty, hundred-and-thirty goals that are out there, you know, and it's like all of the, you know, everything from the past, everything from the present, and dreams from the future. You break it out that way, I mean, there's only so many hours in the day, there's only so many people working here. And, and some of the goals are gonna be more of a high priority in terms of getting them done. And those are gonna end up in your budget, and you're gonna deliberate them, and you're gonna fund those, or you're not gonna fund those. You will control ultimately what elements of this plan get instituted and implemented in the budget through the budget adoption process.
Mr. White.
Well, and, and that's exactly, I think, my point. I think you articulated it perfectly. I completely agree. There's, there's too much here.
There's a lot.
And the things that cost money, clearly, we can prioritize because we only have so much money, and that's gonna be in the budget. What my concern is, all the things that aren't in that budget, we should be prioritizing those things. So, to your point, if there are fifteen things we're telling these new people to come in and do this year, we should give them it ranked, you know, from, from one to fifteen, so that they start doing the ones that are most important. Cause they may come in and be like, oh, I really like this thing, but it was the lowest thing on our total. And so that's where you've got two different parts of this. I completely agree. The budgeting part will be, we'll, 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 we'll knock that out. We'll either fund it, or we won't fund it.
Right.
The other things, the other guidance, I, I don't feel like this process allows us to prioritize the, the other things. It's, they're all hidden here. And so that, that, that's, I just wanna know when we're gonna get to the point where we'll, and I understand you're not being on the dance floor, but we're the ones that are supposed to be giving the guideposts to the staff of like, which of these fifteens things should you be focusing on, or, you know, these five are our top level, these five are our mid, and these last five, if you get to them, great. And so.
Most strategic plans don't get, don't get to that level.
Right.
Well, I understand that, but we also have, definitely have goals.
There are, right, right. The goals are there.
And.
And the prioritization of the goals really happened during the budgeting process. That's, that's typically where I've done it, is in budgeting. And then the work plan is the final result of the strategic plan married to the budget based on prioritization and funding. And then everything else that's there. And, and, and let me say this, once you adopt the budget, and you adopt this plan, you know, the public knows this is, these are the goals, right? You know, this is the budget to support the goals, right? To deliver the results that we said we would. You know, we're gonna have things come up during the year that we didn't plan out, that may not be budgeted, but they are urgent and they couldn't have been thought of, right? Like the pandemic when it hit, you had to make some pretty crucial decisions without a lot of tools perhaps to do it, but you did it. And it was the right decision, but it meant projects were gonna stop, and it meant staff was gonna slow down. It really had huge impact. We don't know what twenty-twenty-two is gonna be like sitting here today. I don't have that crystal ball. So we can adopt the plan, and we can adopt the budget, and we could have a worse pandemic than we have now, some other variant that, that comes out of nowhere. And then we're gonna be rethinking our priorities in terms of what needs to get done.
Mr. O'Brien.
But I guess may, maybe a rhetorical question to everybody is, we need to win all this down somewhat, to, to be realistic about what we can actually.
Or at least prioritize it so that when they go into it, they don't have forty-five things to do.
Right.
They've got chunks of, these are the most important and these are the next important.
That's the budget.
Those fiscal years that are up there were fiscal years that were recommended by directors. That's where those came from.
That's, that's one prioritization, you could say. And when council would weigh in, do we agree with that prioritization?
If you are, if you agree like broadband, I don't think there's anybody that can agree that getting that project started, like, you know, as quickly as possible, but this plan starts in twenty-two, and they start the projects in twenty-one, and they take a year, it might even take, I'm being generous, it might take us two years to do the whole city. I don't know. So that's why it's up there. That's why I added the twenty-three to the plan too. I don't trust an outside contractor necessarily to get everything done as quickly, especially with COVID. You know, you need staff, you need people working, right? You need equipment, so.
Well, and the, the other thing we have.
That's why, that's what I was hoping. If you looked at these, if you looked at these timelines, because it was very general years, and I'm not talking months or days, we're saying, what year is it important for these priorities to happen? You know, and if you're not in agreement with the years that staff recommended, and you have a difference of opinion, that, that's what I was hoping to hear.
Mr. White.
So if we had like, for technology, if, cause this is something I hear from contractors, and, and we've had this conversation a couple of times on this concept, like, a, some kind of online ability to get permits and stream mining that technology-wise. Now, I'm not sure if that's task and, and too simplified, or does that fall under the whole guide of technology enhancement?
Well, if you go into here, I have something that talks about technologies. And I, I'm gonna tell you right up front what my concern is right now. We have a system of software, uh, software. We have a system of platforms that are operational. They have evolved without a plan all the time. This is not unlike any other local government that I've managed. You walk in the door, you inherit what decisions people made, and you have, equipment is equipment, right? It's just there to move all of the information and the data. Then you have these software platforms. Some of these platforms communicate with each other. Some of them don't communicate whatsoever. So you have a discombobulated system like most local governments. So one of the things I added in here was to have an overall technology plan for the city itself. And as I talked to David about it, you know, I, I don't know, you know, first of all, do we have the right equipment, the most up-to-date equipment? That's, that's an easy analysis. The bigger part of it is, we have software which really drives everything we do. You know, is that software making us more efficient? Is that software communicating with us properly? Is it communicating, cross-communicating? Do we have software that we paid for that nobody's using, right? So you have somebody who comes in here and does the, the, the deep dive, and then comes back and tells you, well, it's a great software program, but, you know, your citizens don't use it. They're not interested. Now, you got two hundred, two hundred people used it in the last three years. Well, I'd say that, that system's probably not a good system.
So, to, to, to touch on what you're saying, I think whenever a situation like that comes up, a specific, like, need or idea, it's almost like a bubble that can pop up here under one of the objectives, because if you look at the definitions of these, they're nice and broad. And any idea that we wanna pursue should attach to them. So the city of Millian will be innovative and adapting technology that serves the city and its residents, et cetera, et cetera. That's something that could come up. But just by being in this plan, it's a priority because, at the higher level, as one of these objectives under infrastructure.
Yeah.
That's one way to look at it from, versus top down, but bubbling up.
Here's, here's somebody, somebody submitted a goal that said parks and recreation biannual open house program. Is that a goal? Is that a goal? I don't think so. It's not a goal anywhere I've ever worked. That is actually, that's a function that we do. It's a special event. Not a goal. So improving and enhancing the quality of special events, that's a goal. That's, that's a task underneath it, right? That's one of those things that we would do. Uh, I seventy-four bridge amenities and park opportunities, that, that, that is part of the redevelopment plan for I seventy-four. And I would venture to say that knowing I dot, both sides of the river, they've already have plans that were approved a long time ago when they adopt, when they started this project, put it out for bid, that show all, all of what those improvements are they're gonna leave behind, right? Whether we wanna skate park underneath there based on ULI report or not, you know, that's a subset that falls underneath. Those are, those are discussions for, those are detailed level discussions under a, under a major goal.
All right. With that.
What is that?
You go call. Um, what other concerns do you have, any?
So I'd like to see like a, a permitting, uh, system. I mean, if we've got point of sale for the parks department, we should have a, an, an enhanced permitting tracking, uh, system for our contractors and, um, and our staff.
It's a part of that overall plan.
Cause they, you know, they talked about that that'll make them more efficient.
I mean, we're gonna have to hire somebody, obviously, to do this and, and work with David to get it done. But I, I, I've been here now, it's what, three months? So I have a pretty good idea of what we have going and what we're using, and then I'm hearing what we're really not using.
Right.
You know, and it's problematic. Communication coordinators started, you know, getting messaging out there and all of that that needs to be done. I mean, we need those technologies, and we need those platforms being used properly and integrated. Again, that's not a goal necessarily, but developing a communications plan, that's in here. I added that goal. So that we have an overall communications plan, so that we are maximizing the use of the staff and the technologies we have to do our community outreach and getting a message across about who we are and where we are and where we're going, and not letting other people write that story. So like Davenport, Davenport's got full-blown communications department. See how that works. It works well for them. They get the message out. There's no mixed messaging, and we don't want that. We're coming out of a big transition here, and I, I think it's time to make sure that we get that message out properly, so.
Mr. Schmidt.
Anyway, I'm, I'm fully on board, and I think it is something that we need to draw attention to, is enhancing the technology for contractors, for business, for the visit, when they need to come to the city for something. And, and I guess, it, and it, it is missing from this list right now. And I understand that it falls under those broader goals, and like,
Tasks.
Under two point three, we have explore establishment of a one-stop shop. I mean, it's related to other things. But I still believe that, yeah, we do, I agree, we need to add an enhancing the digital tools.
I have a suggestion, I have a suggestion for you. And maybe, maybe we could do it with this plan, because it's probably a good idea. All of the things that are identified as tasks, I could assemble that onto a single sheet and attach it to the last page of this document, so that you will see that they're all there. And I think that would probably answer a lot of concerns I'm hearing here tonight without, you know, belaboring it, and I know that, you know, there's other agenda.
But does anyone disagree that our overarching definitions of objectives are fine? That they're broad enough to constitute the strategic plan that you can use as a broad guide?
Yeah.
So, so we're technically okay on that part? And next week, when we wanna formally adopt this as our guide for budget, um, at, that you'll include the, the
The task.
Tasks list.
I will. I, I mean, I've seen that done.
And, and we know that these are malleable. These, the, everything that's on this part of each of those plans is malleable to whatever's on the task, task list. Is that, are we clear that that's how it's working? Yeah? Okay. So do you have what you need, Mr. Timian?
Just to, to throw, and we can also add more tasks next year. I mean, none of this stuff is set in stone. This, these are, these are filters by which we look at everything. That's, that's it.
It's a lens.
Right, it's just completely lens, nothing.
All it is, just a lens.
Okay. Great.
Well, I thank you very much for your patience, and thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to get this to you in a different form or format, so that it's a quicker read for not only ourselves, but more importantly, the people we serve. So that when it gets posted, adopted, and posted, residents will see it, and they'll, they'll have a pretty clear picture of where this council is at and where it's taking the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment hanging around? Chief Val? Nope, don't see any. So we'll close out this meeting and move to our regular council meeting. Pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Williams, do you have an invocation?
Yes, a short one. You should.
Okay.
Lord, as we engage in, uh, formative discussion at times, passionate argument, I ask simply that you provide us with the wisdom to act in the best interest of all of our citizens, and the courage to always do what is right. I ask this in your holy name, amen.
You have a roll call, please?
Alderman Williams.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Oops, sorry. Last time it's off. Alderman, Timian.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of committee of the whole council and executive session minutes of August thirty first, two thousand twenty one, and appointments made during committee of the whole on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty one. Second meeting ordinances. Council Bill thirty twenty four dash twenty twenty one, an ordinance amending chapter twenty six police of the Moline Code of Ordinances, sections twenty one oh one dash twenty three nineteen, to reflect the replacement of the position of captain with the position of deputy chief, and remove all instances of the term captain. Resolutions. Council Bill eleven eighty seven dash twenty twenty one, a resolution declaring the following city-owned equipment as surplus property, six Leopold Mark IV, six point five times twenty, with the following serial numbers, eleven oh one nine eight A B, one eighty four eighty eight R, thirty three seventy seven eighty three N, one eighty forty nine two R, four five 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 two two A D, four five nine two one nine A C, and a Sage thirty seven millimeter gas launcher with Eotech holographic sight, serial number three thousand.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Moyer. Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill eleven eighty eight dash twenty twenty one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a surrounding property owner's consent form, granting the city's consent for a Class B liquor license to be issued for twenty nine hundred River Drive Moline.
Move to approve.
Motion by Alderman Went.
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion passes, and that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. This is Lani's business, Mr. Williams.
Your Honor, um, a lot of the sidewalks around Lincoln Irving, I used to ride my bike around the sixties and seventies, and a lot of the houses have changed, but one thing that hasn't changed is at the corner of Seventh Street and Sixteenth Avenue, the crossing guard there, Mary Shavy. Us kids in the mid-seventies would walk there, and we feared her, and she kept everyone safe and in line, and like so many fixtures in Moline that change, some things like Dax and, and Miss Shavy, they, uh, they what make Moline special, and I just wanted to give her a shout out and a recognition, and I know the school district in the past has, but, uh, she's still there, she's still crossing kids and doing what makes Moline great, and I just wanted to say thank you to her. And she is a member of the First Ward, has lived there her whole life, so. Good, good people.
Thank you. Mr. Macias.
Uh, yeah, I just wanna, um, mention that, uh, this weekend, Mercado on Fifth is gonna have a, a celebration. Uh, it's the start of Hispanic Heritage Month, as we, uh, uh, talked about ear- earlier today. And so they're gonna, there's only so many few nice days that we're gonna have this summer, so if you get a chance, I just encourage everybody to come check it out. Um, it is a fundraiser for, uh, the League of United Latin American Citizens that provides scholarships for area students. So, um, if you can, please make it and, and bring a family.
When?
Uh, this Friday, at Mercado on Fifth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Uh, nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Timian.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, Your Honor. I just wanted to share and make sure, uh, that, uh, the council is aware, and anyone, anyone watching at home, the, uh, Moline Public Library is starting to go into its own listening process for part of their strategic planning. Uh, you can find information on their Facebook page, that's posted, um, I imagine it's accessible from the website as well, but, uh, they're having sort of four, uh, sessions where they're encouraging members of the public and, and community leaders to attend to give their feedback on the direction for the library in the future. So just as the, our liaison to the library board, I just wanna make everyone aware that's happening. Uh, the first one is tomorrow, actually, at ten thirty A M. Then there's one Thursday evening, and, uh, the September twenty seventh and twenty eighth. Uh, if you guys look to the details or ask me, I've got it pulled up here, so, just wanna make sure everyone's aware, thank you.
Okay. Uh, for myself, I wanna let you know that on Thursday last week, I participated in a call with mayors from across the seventeenth congressional district. It was put together by the Illinois Municipal League, and it was, the purpose was really to find out if we had some common issues or goals that we might wanna advocate, uh, for with our state, um, and federal representatives. And we did agree to, um, have, have email communication and have quarterly meetings, uh, or at least calls, um, and invite those representatives into those calls, and I can tell you, the number one commonality was staffing. Staffing of police and fire, um, staffing in general. I got some good ideas, um, for Public Works from, from that conversation. I found it very valuable, and I actually ended up being able to update the mayor of Peoria on another call the following day in a program called the Mayor's Innovation Project, uh, New Mayor's, um, Network that I'm a part of. So that was very valuable, and I just wanted you to know, you know, of those kinds of things you're talking about that may, may lend themselves to be legislative priorities, um, I'm on that, and, uh, and trying to advocate for, um, workforce development in a lot of different ways, and with a lot of different partners. Uh, I also wanted to give a shout out to your police department, Chief Gault, I mentioned on Facebook today. I was really proud of the department for hosting Coffee with a Cup tomorrow, is it? And I, I wanna thank you for investing in community engagement in that way. Um, the more we know from all corners of the, the city, the more we can help people. Yes, the thank you to Hy-Vee, our partner in so many ways in the community. I also wanted to bring it to your attention, I don't know if you'd seen it, uh, anywhere briefly, uh, but Moline one fifty is a project that Bob, myself, Macy, and Jeff Manis are, are working on, based on the recommendation of a resident, um, Frank Eggy, who's head of Historic Reservation, reminded us that next August twenty ninth, the twenty, uh, twenty twenty two, is the hundred fiftieth anniversary of our, um, incorporation as a city. Um, so I know we had a celebration for our city's founding so many years ago, um, but this is, could be an exciting time, and there's a lot of opportunities with grants for tourism through Visit Quad Cities and what have you, and staff has already begun looking at that. I'm discussing a, a steering committee, um, with representatives from a variety of perspectives, um, on the city. I think it can be a real, um, unique opportunity to bring people in next summer at a time when there's not a whole lot else going on. I don't know how the founders and the, the city leaders knew that late August wasn't gonna be a popular time for, um, some of the festivals around here, so it, I think it's gonna be really good, so you'll be hearing more about that as we move forward, but we did say we wanted to get started now.
Right.
Before things get crunchy with budgets and things, um, and opportunities for grants later. And that is all I have, staff.
Okay, well, there's always a lot to report on, but I think the biggest issue I need to share with you tonight is an issue that staff and incorporation council have been, you know, bouncing around now for the better part of a week. As you know, back on September third, Governor Pritzker issued an executive order that changes the game when it comes to COVID. And it has an impact on this organization. And it's had impact, impacts here in the, in the, uh, Quad City area already with the Rock Island County Health Department issuing, issuing directives to, uh, to their staff about mandatory vaccines and repercussions for not doing it. Where we are now is we did have, uh, our, our management level discussions. We also entertained a meeting here, uh, yesterday with, uh, all of the unions and the labor presidents from each of those unions to, to share with them where we're at in these discussions that are going on internally. But, uh, as it stands today, the, uh, the fire department, of course, fire EMS are the most directly infected or impacted by the governor's order. It is a legal standing order, and it's a legal standing order, and based on the oath that, that I took to support not only federal and state and local laws, it includes executive orders. So we are between a rock and a hard spot, and, and I don't think that it's negotiable. Corporation council has advised me that I cannot do anything other than follow the law, um, as painful as that is. And, uh, we are going to move forward, uh, with our impact bargaining with the IAFF. They're well aware of where we're at, and they knew this was coming. And, uh, mandatory vaccines for all fire EMS personnel, uh, is going to have to take place. We need a timeline for that, that'll be driven in part by the bargaining, as Margaret was gonna allude to. But, uh, we've entered that phase of the pandemic, and with the orders coming, not only from the governor, but the orders coming from President Biden, uh, from his office, affecting private sector employers, greater than a hundred employees. Um, it seems like these mandates are gonna continue to come, and they're gonna drill down, I don't know where they'll go next, but as it stands now, all healthcare workers, all fire EMS employees work for us, whether in the ambulances or on the engines, because they're advanced life support, uh, they're all certified. Will have to get vaccinated, there's only two exceptions to that rule. Uh, one of those is a religious exemption, uh, which is handled as much the same way eighty eight issues are handled internally. Those forms are available, and then a decision has to be made on whether or not it's a bona fide religious, religious belief that would prohibit them from getting, uh, getting the, uh, vaccine. And then, uh, the other one's escaping me, Margaret, the, uh.
Medical.
Medical, medical conditions. Those are the only two outs, uh, that are available to, uh, any employee who is affected by these mandates, either at the federal or at the state level. So we have the, uh, we have to make a decision, we have to move forward. Uh, we wanna be in compliance with the law, we don't wanna put our, uh, federal or our state funding at risk in terms of the, um, the ambulances. Obviously, we transport Medicare patients, uh, we're reimbursed by the federal government for, for those costs. So, and that's a big part of the budget, it's about a quarter million dollars. So we, uh, we need to make a decision going forward, and the, and the recommendation is gonna be that the, the, mandatory vaccination of the fire rescue personnel, with the exception of the exceptions that, that are, that are made available, would take place once we complete our discussions with IAFF, uh, at the bargaining table for impact bargaining. And then Margaret, if you have anything else to add, or chief, both chiefs, and Margaret and I have been going around on this for well over a week.
Right, so we remember that we have two pieces, we have, uh, President Biden's order with regard to federal employees, and Medicare, which does include, uh, because of their Medicare and Medicaid requirements. And, uh, the, um, then we have Governor Pritzker's order, which, um, affects school personnel, which, or, and who has several, now, who is the president, but that is fortunately not an issue with the others, because we know that, um, are, as several, so, three of them are already executed, and one, uh, qualifies for an exemption. Then we have, um, the order with regard to healthcare workers by Pritzker, which does include EMS, doing a fire, um, EMS employees, both federal and state. Unlike the school personnel, the orders with regard to fire personnel do not include the action of testing, including, uh, the, uh, access. Uh, except it's to a sent personnel. So that's another difference. I anticipate that all orders from Governor Pritzker will address that final segment of public input, whether or not yet, but we'll deal with that, I think. So right now, in this, my advice, they use them, you know, tools about, I went, they had order.
All right.
Okay.
Mr. Williams had his hand up.
No testing. Mandated vaccine.
Mandated, so that, so what is different about the, um, two parts of Pritzker's order? Is that for school personnel, it's specifically a logical test. Whereas with healthcare workers, which includes EMS, there is no reference to testing. It is likely, maybe, with the union, that they need, uh, reuse that option. It's not an option in the board.
Right.
I, I'll give you an update from just this morning's Quad City Health Initiative's board meeting. I represent, um, by state regional commission on that. And one takeaway for me, just informationally, was, uh, even if the testing option is around, those executives in our hospital systems do not think we are going to have the capacity to test everyone, because you either can't, uh, get the test, or the processing time and personnel are not available. So I just offer that as data for you from the meeting I was on.
Yeah, we have Chief Snyder, who already gave us, um, a process, and he's proposed vaccine and has, and we amis for, uh, very diligently to identify testing and to, um, get that, uh, this.
The, the other part of this puzzle too, and, and, and we shared this with the unions, and they really didn't have an issue with it for the most part, suspicions, but we, we did send out a form to every single employee, basically, where they attested the fact whether or not they have the vaccine, or they don't have it, or they refuse to identify, right? And then when they got the vaccine, and which vaccine it was, and, uh, and that would go into their, uh, the medical file and, uh, with their personnel jackets. So we are, we did release that, I believe, was that Monday, Liam, yesterday? So that went out. So we are collecting that information to see what portion of our organization is actually vaccinated and what portion is not. I believe we still have, it was no more than recently, I think it was like ten or twelve employees who were, who were infected and tested positively. Only one hospitalized, uh, unvaccinated, another nine unvaccinated who were infected, and then two who were vaccinated who were, uh, asymptomatic, but they were exposed. So, you know, and a lot of it is just coming in contact with, with family members as opposed to anything else. So, just, just keeping everybody apprised of what's going on with your workforce.
Mr. Williams.
Chief Snyder, how many guys will walk? If you had to guess.
That's a question that we have considered internally, of course, but I can't answer.
I have perspective on that from my meeting this morning as well. That was a question I was aware of over the course of the week, so I took the opportunity to ask those executives at Unity Point, Eternity, sorry, Unity Point Genesis and CHC, who have already mandated vaccines, and one of those systems doesn't have a test option. And they said only a handful of people have walked, specifically citing the requirement as the reason they're walking. Again, just offering data from those sources. Yes?
Right, and our goal as we approach this is to really try and make everybody as comfortable as possible with this process. So having the X available on site, so they don't have to, you know, go somewhere if they're doing or get the, of, or the ending of it. Yet there is still the key new opportunity to get a X and as well as to recover from side effects. One issue that we may want to talk about further is that option that benefits does expire and we have those.
We should extend, yeah.
To consider extending that with this process. But those are things that we are here to first talk about with the fire union and then as we go, let you like you or others, other important groups. So they do know, our goal is not to be ever seen as well.
No.
Include more there, but send. Our goal is to get everybody X.
Mr. Went?
Yeah, can we direct staff to come back next week with that extension? Because we don't have a meeting on the 28th, so we gotta do it next week.
Right.
We can't. I mean, do you have, do you have an idea in your mind, Leah, how long of an extension would be in order? How long was the original timeframe?
The first reason was six months.
So another six months, you believe, would work?
Sure, I think it's.
Gets us into the, into the winter months.
Yeah.
Let's hope this is.
You making a formal motion, or?
Uh, will you direct staff to bring a proposal to extend?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman O'Brien. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And that's next week.
I'm sorry, I didn't allow y'all to discuss.
Are there any questions that anybody has?
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Outside of, I think, extending, which is the right piece, there's no really any action required. I mean, this is in place, this, this is, we are adhering to the law and continuing on.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Any other miscellaneous business from staff?
Yeah, just one item I'd like to bring up, and it was something that took place, actually, on Friday last week regarding McKinley School. Both John Fox and Brad Hellman were, were present during the hearing, again, regarding the school, and I'd just like to let you know that the outcome was is that a $50,000 fine was levied against Mr. Stanley for failing to comply with the code requirements for the property. He now has 35 days within which to either appeal or take any other recourse that's available to him, up to and including asking us to take that property and waiving that fine requirement. So, and taking the deed in lieu of foreclosure. So that's where, that's where that stands now.
Mr. Went?
Uh, I, I guess I would suggest him, it's probably, maybe a closed session discussion, but he also owns the industrial, I think he also owns the industrial arts building back behind. And so if we're going to wind up doing some kind of compromise with him, I think we should try to do a holistic solution with him with the other properties he owns that we may want to control in Moline.
Thank you. So as, as that, as that situation evolves, I'll, I'll keep you apprised of it, either here or by email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Executive session. Oh, staff? Yes, I didn't know you were.
You mentioned Coffee with a Cop. I just wanted to kind of parlay off of your comment about the police department of the community. On Sunday, we participated in the First Responder Leadership Day. It was the first annual, we hope that it will be an annual event. It was actually a brainchild of the Moline Vikings Club, 41st Street, Moline. They approached me at one of their luncheons that they have every month, the Veterans Group, and it just kind of grew out of a small little idea, and it turned out to be a great event. I'd also like to thank Alderman O'Brien, who made the mistake of volunteering. Hey, what can I do to help? And he stood out in the heat for several hours, running the bike, one of the bike rodeo events we had.
I could never be a teacher, because some of those kids.
A lot of kids there, so it was the first time they'd ever ridden a bicycle.
Yeah.
One kid, I think, did your course 10 times, I think he was going to go pro in that event. We ended up giving away over 50 bicycles, I think 51 bicycles, to be exact. It was a great event. One kid saw another kid crying and ended up giving him his bicycle that he won. It was a lot of really kind of cool little things that happened there. You probably see those bicycles, not over at Lincoln Irving, but I would imagine probably within the radius of 41st Street and 12th Avenue. That was the flyers that went out to Springbrook and some of the Washington Elementary Kids, and, and that neighborhood was kind of the target environment there. So I would like to really thank the Moline Vikings Club, of course, Alderman O'Brien, and all the people that participated, the fire department was there. Of course, we outnumbered their vehicles, three to one, I think. I don't, anyway, so thank you very much.
I just want to thank the chief too, for putting it together. I think this event can really grow. I mean, the kids were like, the kids come up, how do I win a bike? I'm like, I think your odds are pretty good, there's like 50, I don't know how many kids.
I think it was 56 kids and 51 bikes.
51 bikes.
Wow. Mr. Went?
I, I also wanted to say, Dr. Savage came and spoke with Rotary this week, and during her presentation, on multiple occasions, she praised your, your name, the police department, and, you know, handle with care and, and those sorts of things. So you're doing great stuff that is making a huge impact throughout the community, so.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation. Five ILCS 120 slash two C11.
Second.
All right, motion and second by Mr. Williams and Went, please.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight i's, no n's.
We're in closed session.